Think we're all met. Before we get started, I'd like to remember two people who passed away. The brother of our Assistant Health Director Patty McIlharny passed away last week in Florida. After a battle with Leo Blastoma. His name was Dana Allen Andrews. He was born in Danvers, he was raised in Watertown. Loved sailing, diving, green woodworking, I think made a business, I read in his obituary of boat building. This is a good time really to note the good work that Assistant Director McIlharny is doing. Obviously with COVID-19, she's under a lot of pressure. To roll out vaccines and we give her our condolences. Also Jacob Burridge, that's Lois Honiger's father. Lois was the longtime Executive Assistant to Mayor Holliday. He passed away. Earlier this month, January 13th. He was just shy of 103 years old. He was born and raised in Ipswich. He served in World War II in the CDs in the Pacific. He's very prominent down in Ipswich, especially veterans groups, so I read. He's survived by a great many relatives, including seventeen great grandchildren. So let's please take a minute to remember these two people. Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Why don't you call the rolls?
Be happy to, Mr. President. Thank you. For the meeting of January 25th, Council Z.
I'm here.
Councila Devlin. Council Devlin, you're on mute, but I know you're here.
You're still muted. Let's move on.
Okay, I've got you. Councilor Khan.
Present.
Council Elaine.
Here.
Council McCauley.
Here.
Council Connell.
Present.
Council Shan. Councila Tantar.
Here.
Councila Vogel.
President, for the record, I'm here on the 27th.
That's exactly what I meant to say. We're all here on January 27th. We know I've had difficulty with dates lately. Councila Wallace.
Here.
And Councilor Augment, we have a full house. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Late filed items.
There's one late file item. It's Ordinance 68. It's on zoning amendment, section 6C. It relates to the number of residential structures per lot.
Motion to waive the rules and accept a late file.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that will go under ordinances. Wherever that is. Or notices. Another comment. Another comment. So for public comment, the rigmarole is everyone gets two minutes. Please raise your hand electronically. I see one hand so far. I'll call on you. Give, you know, please give your, your name and your legal domicile. And two minutes. So the first person is Glenn Richards, excuse me, Glenn Richards. You're muted, you're self.
Hi, thank you, Glenn Richard, 6 Kent Street, also Chair of the Historical Commission. I didn't see Mr. Sendron's name on, I thought he was going to be on the packet today for the second reading, so apologize if he's not. Anyway, if he is, I just wanted to recommend him to the council for approval. That's really all I'm here to say.
Thank you very much. I think, I think he's a little beyond the next, next agenda in February.
Alright, thank you. Bye bye.
Okay. Mayor's comment. So. Mayor Holliday, you are unmuted.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Augerman and members of the council. I hope you all received my update I sent just a couple hours ago. COVID-19 is the first update that I would like to share with you. Our Health Department in collaboration with our neighboring communities completed two vaccination clinics. To administer dosage to 481st responders. Which was a very successful, a little bit of a rocky pilot on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday went seamlessly. I would offer my sincerest thanks to Frank Giaccoloni, our Health Director, his staff. And all the staff and volunteers from the neighboring communities who came together to coordinate this administration site. Our Health Department is continuing to work with neighboring communities to develop additional sites to the vaccines. Additionally, I have been actively working on a vaccination plan with Beth Israel Leahy Clinic. Leahy Health, which Anna Jake's Hospital is part of, this next work network. And signed a license agreement today for B.I. and Leahy Health to administer vaccines to senior 75 plus. This agreement runs from early February through mid-April, Monday through Friday. And will be held at our senior community center. There is still a very slow rollout and limited supply of vaccines. But I am pleased that patients in the system who are identified in the next phase, age 75 plus. Followed by age 65 plus with underlying conditions. Will be receiving a letter, a text, an email, or a phone call from their physician. And will I tell them how to register for the vaccine. No walk-in appointments will be allowed. I'm also happy to report, that's not in your update because this came in late today. That we worked with Cataldo who tested 70% of our teachers. Before they came back to the hybrid model after Martin Luther King. They tested 315 staff and faculty and only one positive case. We've signed up for the pool testing with the state so that that can help us in terms of looking at individual cohorts within the schools to test. And Cataldo contacted the schools today and we're meeting with them tomorrow to talk about a vaccine rollout for teachers. This is all really good news because it will help us get students back in, in-person learning. So that's where we are. I will be happy to send the communication protocol to all of you so that you have it. From Beth Israel Leahy Health. I think it's important that you understand how this system is going to work. The license agreement is for $15,000 a month. Which will include the deep cleaning as well as two police details during the time that they're there, Monday through Friday. And will also allow us a few thousand dollars over and above that to cover. Operational costs of the facility while they're on-site. Again, this will be administered totally by Beth Israel Leahy. And they will be reaching out to their patients to let them know how to register and using the, the senior site. We can renew this license agreement. If it turns out that we're still not ready to open the senior center by mid-April. But that's sort of where we are at this point. We have had a decrease in cases, which is really good news since the holidays. We were concerned about another surge as we saw at Halloween and Thanksgiving. But we didn't. We remain in the yellow zone. We have 77 positive cases in the last 14 days. And the Health Department has put up a new graphic dashboard, which I think is a lot. Is more helpful and easier to read in terms of our status. In terms of personnel, it is with great pleasure. That I announced the hiring of Paula Burke, our new COA Director, who began on January 19th. She comes to Newburyport following years of work in Topsfield, most recently the past four years as the Director of the COA in Topsfield. In the Building Department, Diana, I'm sorry, that should have said RZA, not ZZA. She's the Office Manager. She began this past Monday. She was the Senior Administrative Assistant for Inspection Services Department in Topsfield. Prior to joining our staff. And we are very pleased to have her with her level of skills and expertise on board. Barbara, as you know, who has retired from that department after 37 years, is working to help to transition her. The Building Commissioner and Building Inspector job descriptions have been reposted. And redone a little bit, tweaked emphasizing that no zoning requirements are part of this job. Which is typically rolled into a Building Inspector or Building Commissioner with a slight increase in salary. And that has really helped in terms of new resumes that we've been receiving. And our HR Director and my Chief of Staff have started preliminary interviews, so I'm encouraged. As we move forward here because it's been very, very frustrating in terms of filling these positions in the Building Department. I also wanted to announce in our Auditor Office that Kathy Leo is retiring this week after 23 years of service in the city. We offer her congratulations and best of luck. Under Finance, Governor Baker's House One Budget was posted today and the cherish sheets can be found on the DORDLS website. I've given you the link there. House One recommends funding. For FY22 of Chapter 70 at a little more than 5.4 billion. And that's includes 197.7 million dollar. Increase than FY21. It increases unrestricted general aid by 30, 39.5 million. To 1.168 billion and increases charter school tuition reimbursements. To 143.5 million and level funding for most other cherish sheet accounts. So please take a look at those and we certainly can talk about that as we go forward. Although the H1 Budget does begin to fund the Student Opportunities Act, which was passed last year with an increase in 197.7 million or a 3.7 increase. This translates to an increase in 66,330 in Chapter 70 funding to Newburyport. Although the H1 Budget does fund the Student Opportunities Act. It's still not, it's still unfortunately because of the way the Chapter 70 funding. Formula is currently and the fact that we have a charter, charter school. We're not seeing that kind of 3.7% increase. Merrimack River Dredge and.
Mayor, just to give you, just to give you a heads up, you're, you're at the seven minutes, so I know you've got a lot you got to get through. I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Okay, sorry. There's a lot of information there about the Merrimack River Dredge. Please read it and, you know, I'm very pleased that. That our federal legislation, Senator Warren, Senator Markey. And Congressman Moulton have worked really hard in order to get the funding to the Army Corps of Engineer for the dredge of the Merrimack River. There'll be a lot more information coming forward on this. We also have learned that the Piscataca River has been funded and that there is some potential for dredge materials to go into the littoral system, which could help. Offshore sand replenishment to Plum Island. We had a big media event out there on January 25th. There's information about that, just in terms of raising awareness about what's really happening out there on Plum Island. At Reservation Terrace area, and I was grateful that Councilor Z was able to join us. And I'm sure he can add more information about that. We have a call on Friday afternoon with Lieutenant Governor Polito. To work about with other state agencies about a solution for reservation terrace. We are looking at a hard structure because we are out of options there. We have done everything. Possible in terms of following all the environmental requirements. Saferidge School, the only thing I wanted to tell you is the beacons have been installed on High Street and are operational. And then we'll be back in the, in the spring to finish that project. Also, the Hawk Lights have been installed. They're not operational yet at the end of State Street, but that's exciting to know that we will have. Additional safety measures there. I do want to take a minute to talk about Low Street, even though I'm running over. Please read what I wrote. As you all are aware, I've spent nearly three years working with the Guard and the state in acquiring the surplus property. There's a lot of information there in terms of where we stand. I will be joining the Planning and Development Meeting tomorrow night. To be able to have a further in-depth conversation about the Low Street property in the upcoming vote to purchase that. So please read what I, I put in that packet. I wanted to also just mention again, the Mass DOT Shared Streets Grant for $286,000. It's dedicated to parklets. It's really exciting to know that we will be moving forward with outdoor dining. In the future, I fully support the ordinance that Council President Augerman. Put forward to codify this process as we go forward. And there's a sample picture in my. Update to show you what a parklet looks like and we're working with the Chamber and restaurants to identify those who would like to be part of this parklet process. The MMA Conference was totally. Remote this year. Little more information about that. Please, councilors, I have, many of you have signed up for meetings with Matt and I. These are really, really, really important meetings. I can't emphasize enough, had the first one today with the counselor, have several tomorrow. Please, if you haven't signed up, reach out to Matt and get on my calendar. It's really important to have this conversation, this dialogue with you. Just that we still have $203,000 in the CGPG grant available. We've awarded. I'm sorry, we've awarded $203,000 to 20 businesses, so we still have approximately 190,000 in funding available for small businesses. Information about where we are with the DEA allowances there. And finally. I am working to schedule my State of the City, which obviously will have to be remote. And we'll let you know more details about that in the very near future. Sorry, I ran over.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Council Vogel had a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, under your, when you were describing the Building Commissioner reposting the job. I got a little, it was a little unclear to me. Are you, are you saying that you're, you're emphasizing that there's no zoning require, no understanding of zoning requirements? And then you're increasing this, no?
No, no enforcement of zoning because we have Jennifer. We hired that zoning enforcement officer that started part-time and that went to full-time. So they work in collaboration on zoning issues.
Okay, yeah, that didn't make sense that the Building Commissioner would have no, not understand zoning.
Oh, no, they need to understand zoning, but they work directly with, with our zoning enforcement officer.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Council. Council Tantar has his hand up. Go ahead, Council.
Mayor, on vaccination, so is it, do I understand correctly that if a Newburyport resident does not receive a communication from their physician. They will not receive a jab at the senior center and they should look elsewhere.
Correct.
And that elsewhere would be the state site.
Or we're setting up additional sites with our, with our regional team that did the first responders. So Frank is working with. Our partnership to set up, I believe, a site in Amesbury and one in West Newbury. But again, I will provide more of those details once we have them. But anyone who is part of Anna Jake's system should be receiving information from their physician about. When they can register, if they're 75 and older. To start.
So will, will we have information on where to sign up for a shot on the city website?
Once we have all the sites identified, absolutely, we will share that information. I also plan on doing a reverse 911 call to the community because we, as I'm sure you have been inundated with calls about win, win, win. And there's all kinds of chatter going on in some of the local community blogs, which is misinformation. So we've got to try and, and get the right information. I will be talking about this during my PSA that I do on Thursday afternoons also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Council. Other questions for the mayor? I'm not seeing any other. Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome. Have a nice meeting.
Thank you. Oh, whoop, whoop. I went too fast. Are you still there? We have Council Devlin has his hand up. Council Devlin?
Yes, there's not a question for the mayor. I was waiting till that was done. I just.
Okay, alright.
I need the ZBA appointments pulled from the consent agenda.
Yeah, okay. Hold on just a second. Let me catch up here.
The appointments, 222, 228, 223, I think.
Okay, those are pulled. Alright, everyone got that? Those are all pulled. And so they're gonna have to go. Where do we, I'll have, those are first readings or second readings?
Those are first readings, so they'll go down on the regular agenda for first reading.
Yeah, they'll go, okay, so they'll go after communications and before second readings.
Yes.
Okay. Do councilors have anything else they want to pull? All you gotta do is ask. Nope. Okay, Kirk Jones, tell us, tell us what's left in the showcase.
Okay, so for the consent agenda this evening, we have the approval for the January 11th meetings. Minutes, excuse me. We have four communications. We have Communication 282. Which is a letter from Jim McCarthy regarding a sign proposal. That's to go to Public Safety. Communication 283, which is a letter from the same Jim McCarthy regarding speed limits. That's to go to Public Safety. We have Communication 284, which is a letter from Suzanne Gallagher. That's to go to Budget and Finance. We have Communication 285, which is a memorandum from Councilor Wallace that would go to Neighborhood and City Services. There are no transfers. The following first reading of appointments. Appointment 218, Collins Sarf, 23 Charter Street to the Commission on Disabilities until 228, 2024. Appointment 219, which is Charles Griffin, 3 Vernon Street to the CPC until 21, 2024. Appointment 227, Glenn Richards, 6 Kent Street to the CPC until 21, 2022. The following appointment, Appointment 220 goes to the Planning and Development Committee. It's Daniel Washall. 47 Plummer Avenue to the ConCon until 228, 2024. Then we have Appointment 221, which is Paula Burke, 23 Blueberry Lane, Topsfield. To be Director of Council on Aging until 228, 2024. The following two appointments will go to the Planning and Development Committee. Appointment, I'm sorry, these are the ones that are removed and we'll take these up in the, the next three ZBA appointments will take up in the regular agenda. Thank you. Next are two reappointments. Appointment 224, Mike Rosen, 20 Fair Street to the CPC until 21, 2024. And Appointment 225, Michael De Sette. From 44 Jefferson Street to the same CPC until 31, 2024. Following items are removed from their respective committees, license and permits. Communication 230, Application 14, 15, 17, 18, 19, and 20. From Public Safety, we have Order 231. With the change with the three ZBAs, we are, that would be the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so that we're done with that. Mayor's update?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. We don't have any communications, so Rich, how about the three? Council Devlin is recused. Let's take up.
So noted in the file, Council Devlin has recused for the following three. The first. Two are separate. They're going to Planning and Development. It's Appointment 22, 222. Gregory Bennet, 15 Wollin Street to the Zoning Board of Appeals until 228, 2026. An Appointment 228, Ken Swanton, 10 Tremont Street to the ZBA until 228, 2026. The next appointment he is already on, he was put in for one year, as I understand it. It should have been until 2025, not 2022. That's why we're calling it a confirmatory appointment. Takes the same number of readings. Appointment 223, Stephen Delisle, 195 High Street. Again, to the Zoning Board of Appeals until 531, 2025. So those three are now up for a motion.
Motion to approve collectively the referral of 222 and 228, as well as the confirmatory appointment of 223?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's do, I'm sorry, let's, go ahead.
Do they need to be referred to Planning and Development?
Yeah, by, by rule automatically. Yep.
Okay, so we don't have to state that. Alright.
No, yeah, but they, right. So the, just so everyone knows, as Council Tantar pointed out, these ZBA appointments always go to Planning and Development, so everyone knows what they're voting on. Let's do a roll call.
Okay. Roll call for these first reading of appointments. Council Z.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Accused.
I'm sorry, accused. Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Elaine. Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Councila Tantar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Augment.
Yes.
Ten yes, one recused.
Okay, someone can fire off a pistol or send up a flare for Council Devlin and then we'll go to second reading appointments. Go ahead, clerk. He's back.
There we are, terrific. Welcome back, Council Devlin, for the record. Second reading of appointments. Appointment 209, Lorraine Ward, 7 Sullivan Drive, Human Rights Commission until January 31st, 2023. Following of four reappointments. Appointment 211, Suzanne Cameron, 5 Milk Street, Flotable Housing Trust until January 1st, 2023. Appointment 212, Jill Brennan, 24 Webster Street, Haverhill, as Assessor until 11, 2024. Appointment 213, Joseph Cedarquist, excuse me, to Whitman Road, Wilmington, Assistant Harbor Master until 1231, 2023. Appointment 214, Lori Bunyan, 96 Lime Street, as Human Resources Director until 11, 2024. Those would be the second reading of appointments.
Motion to approve collectively on second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Elaine.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tantar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
And Council Augment.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you. What's up orders? Looks like a preservation restriction.
We do. We have a preservation restriction. It's Order 234. It is with respect to 190 High Street with the Nelsons. The Mass Historic has sent a letter of support and the agreement, which I believe runs for 40 pages. Is attached to the order. If you'd like, I would go through all 40 pages.
That's quite all right. Is there a motion?
Motion referred to Planning and Development.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So that's referred. Next.
Order 235, which is as follows. City Council accepts with gratitude. A gift from Jim McCarthy from Salt Bark Financial in the amount of $1,000 for the planting of trees by the Parks Department.
Motion.
Council Z.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any in opposition? That's referred. Next, looks like, it's the election calendar with an emergency preamble.
It is. And the reason there is an emergency preamble is that the state. Is requiring the Clerk's Department to put these dates into the election system before the end of January, because our next meeting is February 8th.
Okay.
For that, we asked that it be allowed tonight as a measure.
I'd like to motion to take the EP and the order together.
To, to approve?
Yes.
Okay, okay. How about a second?
Second. Shall I mention the order at all? The order pertinent.
Point of order. I just had a question. Council President.
Go ahead.
Well, I know one of them takes a super majority, right? The emergency preamble, whereas the election calendar doesn't. Can we still take them up together? Just a question.
You can. I mean, they'll both need, they'll, they'll both need two-thirds, so that's a risk that the moving counselor makes. If his motion fails, then yeah, you're right.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Sure. Go ahead, clerk.
I just wanted to mention, if I might, pertinent dates, one would be. We would have a preliminary election if we had the requisite number of people running for office. That would be September 21st, 2021. And then, of course, the main event, which is November 2nd. That's the local election. For those. Listening, that would be the mayoral election. That would be the city council election and the school committee, three of the six members of the school committee. I should also mention, because everyone will ask, when's the date one can pull papers? And nomination papers will be available for all of those offices. Within a day or so, if this is approved. And then. The last day to pull papers is.
It looks like July.
One second. Actually, I think it's, that's, you can, last day and hour correct to obtain them. Last day and hour to submit them is August 3rd. So it's July 29th. You can pull, you have to have them back by August 3rd.
Okay. Okay, so this. Okay, so this moving counselor has stand up. Counselor Z, go ahead.
I just have a quick question for the city clerk. Are these dates that are prescribed here in this list, is there any discretion in those, or, or those are basically based on, you know, which is the first Tuesday in this month and that sort of thing? Do you decide anything here, or these are basically aligned with, say, state statutes or otherwise?
Yeah, you'll see actually in the, in the order, you know, Chapter 53 generally controls. The only thing, to be honest, that, well, you could move around probably more than this, but generally the only thing you move around is the preliminary election. Some people call it a primary, but it's preliminary, and we chose the third week. It works for us. We don't think it runs in the face of any serious religious holidays. And we think, although we don't know yet, it will be early voting. And if there is early voting, whether it's five days, seven days, or 14 days in front of November 2, it gets, it gets almost too close if we moved that third week to the fourth week, which I believe the Charter actually says we do have the option to do so, but I would plead with you not to do so.
I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, before, before I go to Counselor Con, the, the mention of the holidays reminds me. The clerk Jones and I did contact a local Jewish congregation about our meeting schedule, and then while we were at it, we, we asked him about this preliminary election. And they don't have a rabbi right now, but they have a rabbi in training. And Mr. Matthews, and he was very helpful. He said, first of all, there, there aren't any actual religious ceremonies associated with Hanukkah, so we don't have to worry about having meetings during Hanukkah. He didn't think that was a problem. This one, I think it was Purim. Is that right, Richard? In September.
Purim.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, so this one, he said, was kind of a tweener. You know, there are some ceremonies, but you know, that, as he put it, there are a lot of holidays, so he didn't, he didn't think that it was either this or one of our meetings in September, that, that was a conflict. We can flex it out later, but he didn't think it was a problem. Counselor Con.
Great, thank you, Council President, and thank you for that, reaching out to, to the CAA. I, I had a couple of questions for the clerk here. On the dates for Thursday, I, I know City Hall is open later, and I noticed the time, like 6:00 PM for the last day and hour to get nomination papers. But in terms of the submittal of those papers, or no, sorry, the last day and hour to file withdrawals is 5:00 PM on Thursdays. Is there a reason on Thursdays, like, one is till 6, one is till 5? Like, did you want consistently till 6?
I, let me be perfectly honest. I don't know where those times came from. We are open until 6:00 PM right now, which and I believe that's the way the state has suggested we work. In other words, if we were open till 7:00 or 5:00 or 9:00, that's what the time would have been. For 5:00 PM, probably doesn't make a lot of sense, except it's always been 5:00 PM. I remember that because I stay late. We stay late, so it probably is. If it's not in the statute, it's probably in a suggested regulation by the Elections Division. I don't know if that's an answer, but it's the best I can come up with.
Right, so, and then the other one is the Wednesday, the last day and hour to register voters. So, so do you stay open later then for Wednesday to accommodate the 8:00 PM deadline?
I'm sure that is, I'm sure that is by statute, because it's always been 8. Maybe one could argue, if we were still under a pandemic executive order, we could move that, but we won't be by September 1, right? So we won't worry.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, other questions on the calendar, because, you know, there are a lot of dates in there. Cannot see any. Again, it's a combined motion. It needs a two thirds supermajority, so let's do a roll call.
Okay, so this is a roll call for both the emergency preamble and the order itself. Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
And Counselor Agon.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have another emergency preamble, and again, it's at the option. You don't have to take them together with the underlying resolutions. Totally up to what the counselors want to do.
I'd like this, these to be separate.
Okay. So Clerk Jones, can you introduce the emergency preamble?
Emergency preamble states, this is Order 237, that an emergency exists due to the fact that the matter referenced in Order 237, which is the resolution itself, is a resolution on the January 6, 2021, attack on the Capitol. It's time sensitive inasmuch as the matter is currently in debate in the United States Senate itself. Therefore, the Council affirmatively declares that the emergency exists such that it should be maybe voted upon at its first introduction to this council. It's submitted by Counselor Tantar.
Mr. President, may, may I speak to this?
Yeah, yeah, did you?
Just the emergency preamble. It says here, this is under investigation currently in the Senate. People probably thinking about the the trials of the president and charges for impeachment, but also the House is, is considering investigation of the, of the broader causes of the attack on the Capitol. And since, since it is the intent, if this passes, that the resolution be communicated to our representatives in, in Congress, both the House and the Senate, as currently under investigation, the sooner we do it, the better.
I, I, I'm sorry, I, I was confused. So yours is a motion to approve.
It's a motion to approve the emergency.
Yeah, right, but I just need a second, that's all.
Second.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, now, so Counsel, Counselor Tantar, did you want to continue?
I'm all set on, on the emergency preamble. I will speak, if it passes, I'll speak, well, yeah.
Got it. Next is Counselor McCauley.
Thank you, Council President. I am very, you know, I, I too am troubled by the actions that happened in the Capitol. But first, I'd like to talk about the emergency preamble, and I ask for a bit of leeway here. I'm a bit troubled by this. We have five cosponsors, the same five cosponsors that have been on a number of items. And unfortunately, I read today in the Daily News, the day of this meeting, that because I didn't sponsor this, or because I wasn't available to sponsor this, that I'm being labeled a supporter of the actions in the Capitol, and, and I take offense at that. I also read in the Daily News that the, it was not the intent of the sponsor to, to infer that, but nonetheless, it became another untrue insinuation against me. And this is the third one in two weeks. On Saturday, we spoke about being respectful, inclusive in our language and actions with one another. And I also learned that intent doesn't matter. What matters is, is how I feel about the words and actions that I hear. So, well, I gotta say, I feel disrespected about this communication. And now I feel bullied by the perception in the Daily News that I'm a supporter by, by not taking action of the actions that happen there. So as I reflect on this, I have thick skin. I'll survive. But on this emergency preamble, I'll vote no, and suggest that we send this to committee where additional counselors could spend the time to sponsor and, and, and jump on board, and we can discuss this collectively and get to a unified position. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Other counselors. Counselor Z.
Yes, I, I just wanted to state that I too will oppose the emergency. I don't find the, the argument for it being an emergency to be compelling. I know that emergencies are something we talk about often, but I, I find myself unconvinced that this merits an emergency response insofar as how the Charter construes an emergency. And secondarily, it's unclear to me how this is city council business, and I think that, you know, depending on the outcome of this vote, that will become more clear as though if we need to try and refer it to committee, what committee are we going to refer it to? So I just wanted to state my reasons for objecting to the emergency preamble at this time.
Thank you, counselor. Other counselors on the emergency preamble. Seeing none. Counselor Lane.
Yes, I just kind of want to echo. I was a little bit let down the way this all came in myself. So I'm going to be voting no on the emergency portion of this. Based on what you've heard from the past two counselors, not to echo them, but that's, that's kind of where I stand on the emergency part, portion of this as well.
Thank you. Counselor Con has not spoken yet.
Great, thank you, Council President. I, I will be supporting the emergency preamble. I know it takes a, you know, a super majority, so two thirds, and not sure if everyone will be there on this, but let me explain why in terms of the emergency aspect of it, I, I do think because it's a conversation that's currently happening, and it is something that, you know, there's nothing really in here in, in terms of needing to, I mean, I, maybe people might want to change some of the whereas's and add some language, and I'd be welcome if that's really kind of where folks want to maybe amend a little bit. But right now, it seems pretty much something that a lot of other communities are doing, and I think a lot of the language is kind of consistent with that to kind of get a statement out there and use the position we have to be able to do that. So I think the way it was drafted was to be inclusive of kind of like the, the overall sentiments and, you know, and I, and, and so I will be supporting this as an emergency preamble for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other counselors that haven't spoken yet, because Counselor Tantar is waiting. Counselor Tantar, go ahead.
Sure, since it was brought up by Ward 5 Counselor, and his interpretation, the newspaper, of course, I can't account for how he feels about things. I can just tell you my intent. I, I understand, I think it's true, that I can not contact no more than four counselors about cosponsoring. Yeah, once I just contact a fifth counselor, counting myself, that would make six, and that would be an illegal meeting, would violate public meeting laws. So it was not my intent to exclude anyone, but I, but I just cannot go beyond, I could not go beyond that. We very often have, have resolutions before us, for instance, congratulating high school students and valedictorians, salutatorians, and I certainly hope no member of the public thinks that because some of us don't cosponsor that, we, we do not support congratulating our high school graduates and the valedictorians, salutatorians. I don't know how anyone would, would come to that conclusion. I think from, from what I understand, I, I think there was perhaps one person did not understand the person in contact at the council, and that found its way into the story. I didn't, I didn't put, I didn't have anything to do with that, right? I don't know where that came from. All I can tell you is that it was not my intent to exclude anyone. And, and I would, and the clerk can, can, can tell me if I'm wrong here, and now that we're public, all right, and, and this is a public meeting, if I welcome anyone who wishes to join me and be a cosponsor on this. And I'm not trying to exclude anyone. And the city clerk can tell me if I'm wrong, but any of you can join right now. All right, and, and I would very much appreciate that. Secondly, I do think this is a timely fashion because it's under consideration, and our representatives in Congress would benefit very much from hearing from those of us on a local level.
Thank you, counselor. The clerk and Counselor Con and I actually were in touch with the Attorney General today about what the rules are for sponsorship. They're a bit more convoluted than you might think. I don't know that now is the time to do it. I think we'll do it during Good of the Order. I, I can move it up if people want to have that discussion, but I really think it's good of the order. The, the, the punchline is you're actually not supposed to contact anybody else, which none of us expected to be the rule. Counselor Vogel.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So I, I read, well, first of all, I echo the, the sentiments of the Counselor Large before me. And I read again the article in the paper today, and I'm trying to find where the disparaging remarks were made. I know it certainly wasn't my intent to have anybody feel as though that they, by, by not being a sponsor, that they were against the notion or in favor of the actions or whatever, however it might have been interpreted, but I just don't see it, and I would hear, you know, publicly, you know, because my name is on there, do apologize to, to the counselor from the Ward 5, who feels as though it was disparaging. That was not anybody's intent at all, and I applauded the effort by, you know, the Counselor Large who put this together, and I signed on. That's, that's the beginning and the end of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other counselors, before we go to roll call. Yes, Counselor Connell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm going to ask for a ruling from the chair on when it might be an appropriate time to solicit additional sponsors if members who did not have an opportunity to act as cosponsors would like to do so. And I'm not quite sure. This is kind of a murky area of our rules. It's, it's not something I've encountered before.
All right, well, my ruling is when the item is called, so we're still on the emergency preamble, which only has one sponsor. So I, I suppose any counselor now, and, and by the way, the, when we get to Good of the Order, we're going to have to change our practices, and we'll discuss that. But someone could ask to be added to the emergency preamble now. But I think for the underlying motion, I would wait until that's read. I think that would be the way to go.
Follow?
If I may. Please go, yeah, go right ahead.
Yeah. If we, whatever happens with the emergency preamble, if we don't pass the emergency preamble, the, the substance of this resolution is moot. Can we procedurally, in your view, have a conversation about the resolution itself, assuming the emergency preamble goes down in flames? And at that point, solicit members, and then go back and enact an emergency preamble, following the discussion of the merits of the resolution itself?
I don't think so. I think that would be a, a motion for reconsideration. We have rules on reconsideration, by the way. We can do that. I think the clerk will look it up, and I'll look it up too. Well, we can reconsider the, okay, you know, you can reconsider a vote. We can't vote on some, the same thing twice any other way. I don't think we can do that.
We, we, we could come back.
Yeah, if you had enough, if you meet the rules for reconsideration. So Clerk Jones, can you dial that up when you get a chance?
I will. It's as simple, I think, as the prevailing side must move.
That's right.
Right, someone, that's right, someone from the prevailing side, so if the, if the preamble goes down, then they have to come around to that.
Okay.
All right, but, but hold, hold on, I, I just want to make sure I understand, because now I'm confused. So, so if the emergency preamble doesn't, doesn't go forward, you're saying, Counselor Connell, that the substance of the underlying motion is moot?
Well, it, since we, we won't be able to enact something in time for it to reach our congressional delegation that is considering this matter, it, it does effectively become moot, and, and I'm hoping that we could come out of tonight's meeting with some direction in a positive way, because I think that the majority of the members, perhaps a super majority, perhaps unanimous sentiment would be to condemn the acts of January 6 and convey to our congressional delegation our feelings on the matter.
Okay, let me make another suggestion. It sounds like you, you, you might want to make a motion at table. You mentioned, you make a motion at table on the, the emergency preamble, right? Well, wait a second, so in the Charter.
Can we take it off the table in the same meeting?
Yeah, hold on. But the question is, the emergency preamble allows us to vote on it in the same night, does it not, Clerk Jones?
Yes, it does.
Do we need an emergency preamble to discuss it in the same night and not refer it?
No.
Okay. But we would need a two thirds majority to waive the rule to send it to committee, right? We would.
To send the emergency preamble to committee?
No, no, anytime something, anytime something comes in. No, no, anytime something, anytime something comes in, it's supposed to go to committee unless we rave, waive the rule. So you need a two thirds on that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Yeah.
You're right, which is the same way of saying we needed two thirds, but it's for, if, if the emergency preamble is tabled or whatever, and then the resolution itself is discussed with or without changes, let's assume there's changes, then that is maybe tabled, then you can take the emergency preamble off the table, see whether that passes and then.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm getting at, Clerk Jones, is say we, if we table the emergency preamble, we put aside the question whether we're going to vote on it tonight. In order for the full council to take up a measure that comes in the same night, our rules have to be waived. And that's
Saying what you're saying.
And that's also two thirds. So, you know, I Yes, maybe there's no way to finesse this. Counselor Con, go ahead.
Well, I, I just, I was going to say point of order, but in the previous emergency preamble, we did not waive any rules because that would probably go to general government in terms of the committee. So we might have to go back and do that one too.
I think we would. So that's right. I forgot to get, I forgot to do that. All right, sorry, y'all, we're gonna have to go back. So let's, I'm sorry, we're gonna have to go back on the elections calendar. I will need a, a motion to waive the rule in order to consider the elections calendar without referring it to committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All's in favor.
Aye.
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 Okay, and then I, how about a motion as we had from Counselor Z, taking together the emergency preamble and the calendar itself for a two third super majority roll call?
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Is there discussion on that? No, okay, roll call. Let's do it again. That's my, it's my fault. I blew it.
No, 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 it's, it's a good point. Really, our, our motions for emergency preamble should always include a waiver, basically.
Yeah, and we usually remember, but I, I didn't, I didn't this time, and I'm wrong.
Listen, blame clerk, that's why I'm here.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so this is a vote on the emergency preamble, second time.
Well, and the underlying, we're gonna do them together on this.
I'm doing together, okay. Emergency preamble and the election calendar. Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Dublin.
Yes.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. Second times the charm.
Okay, great. Now, we, we've already why don't you, we're gonna bring before you again, clerk, why don't you introduce again the emergency preamble for the resolution on June sixth, January sixth. So let's just get it before, and then, and then, you know, counselors can make motions and we'll, we'll do it again.
Well, Mr. President, point of order, you know, there's already a motion on the floor with a second on that one, and I know we're sort of flying a little bit here by the seat of our pants, but I respectfully, I would suggest we pick back up where we were, which was that there was a motion on the
Motion in a second on the emergency preamble.
And that's where we stand today.
Okay, does everyone know who we are? Good, all right. All right. I guess roll call. Nope, no, Counselor Connell on his hand. Go ahead.
With the intent of giving everyone a fair opportunity to co sponsor, I moved we tabled this item.
Okay, that's not, that's not debatable. So motion to table. Roll call. Yeah, civil majority, let's take a roll call, motion to table.
So motion to table the emergency preamble for order two thirty seven, correct?
Yes.
And that was made by Counselor Connell's, who was the second by?
I was.
Counselor Vogel.
Got you. Counselor Zede.
No.
Counselor Dublin.
No.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
No.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion to table passes. The emergency preamble is on the table.
Okay, so the next item, could you please introduce the next item, which is the underlying word?
Next item is order two thirty seven itself. It is the resolution. It goes for a page and a quarter. Maybe I could try to give you a synopsis of it. It is definitely referencing January sixth. It is quote, "A mob clearly encouraged by the President of the United States to storm the Capitol Building and attempted to disrupt the process of certifying an election." Following that, whereas elected leaders of the city of Newburyport joined with other mayors, city councilors and other elected leaders throughout the country condemning these actions. Whereas the First Amendment establishes a sacred right of speech, free speech and peaceful assembly and peaceful protest, those who stormed the Capitol Building and those who incited them went far beyond anything such as that. Whereas it's the duty of honorable people of all elected officials to speak out, condemn their outrage and to show those who invaded our Capitol and those who encouraged them that they do not represent America. America is represented by millions of free people throughout our land who continue to cherish our land, our freedoms and our right to choose our own leaders. Whereas Donald John Trump, President of the United States, was impeached on January eleventh for high crimes and misdemeanors by inciting violence against the government. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the elected leaders of the city of Newburyport hereby join with millions of Americans in condemning in the strongest possible terms the attack on our Capitol Building and this assault on our democracy. Call upon elected leaders to launch a full and fair investigation on how this could occur, occur and how it can be prevented. Further be it resolved that we call upon the United States Congress exercises power under section three of the Fourteenth Amendment to prohibit Donald John Trump from ever again holding public office and further be it resolved that the city clerks send a copy of this resolution to U.S. Senator Elizabeth Warren, U.S. Senator Edward Markey and U.S. Congressman Seth Moulton jointly submitted Counselors Connell, Con, Shan, Tontar and Vogel.
Okay, now I've ruled previously, I think this is the time, we know who the sponsors are for others to ask to be added as a sponsor. So I will go first. I want to be added as a sponsor if I may with the permission of the other five sponsors.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, if they all consent, clerk, I guess I'd like to do that. Counselor Counselor Wallace.
I would like to be added as a sponsor as well.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Counselor Lane.
I too respectfully would like to be added as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Z.
Mr. President, I just want to raise to object to these proceedings. You've now added more sponsors than are required to pass this resolution. I don't see how you could possibly expect any reasonable discussion when you now have an excess of sponsors relative to the number of people needed to pass it. I also don't think that it's in order to be adding sponsors when there's no motion on the floor. In my opinion, respectfully, the only motion on the floor that could be considered reasonable would be to send it to committee at this time because there is no emergency in place. So there is no potential path as of this moment to hear this matter tonight or to do anything with it other than refer it to committee. The charter is very clear about that. So what I would consider to be a maneuver to table while clever doesn't get you out of that mind. So I think this whole conversation is moot. If there are seven sponsors now, I believe if I'm counting correctly, you have the votes to pass it, but you don't necessarily have the votes to do an emergency. And so this, this sort of maneuvering and posturing around has sort of diminished the conversation, in my opinion, and really destroyed it. So I object to this. I, I'm not going to participate further, really. There's not much for me to say that makes any difference. So I wish, you know, I wish there was a little bit different, but I think there was an attempt to be clever and I don't think it really succeeded in the end.
Okay, well, let me, let me explain my ruling, because you guys can, you can overrule me by two thirds, but the, the opinion that we got from the Attorney General was when, when matters are sponsored, counselors are not supposed to contact each other. They're supposed to, their recommendation was to have the clerk email all of us by BCC and say, who would like to sponsor this? I, I don't shoot the messenger, I'm just telling you what the ruling is. And and then they said, once it's introduced, if people want to join as sponsors, they have to do it when it's introduced. Clerk Jones, am I correct on that?
You're very correct, yes.
Right, so, so I'm not inventing as president, just so you know, and I will, I'm sorry, things are going fast. I thought we could do it good of the order. I was wrong. That's what the AG says, that's when you're supposed to add sponsors. That's the, so we haven't sent it anywhere, we haven't done anything with it. So I, I'm thinking to myself as president, if something comes in, you're right, Counselor Z, the, the normal course under our rules, unless we waive the rule, which we haven't waived yet, is that it gets referred to a committee, but before it gets referred to a committee, it has to have sponsors. And then I looked at our rules and I'm trying to find a limit on sponsors and I don't, I don't see anything in the rules. I agree, it's, it's unusual to have five sponsors, let alone seven. That's absolutely true, but I couldn't find anything in the rules against it.
And pardon me, it's eight sponsors, I believe now. If I have that number correct, I apologize.
It's eight, I, I'm, I'm sorry. So I, I, I hear you. I guess, I guess I'm saying is I'm, I'm not trying to make a mockery. I'm trying to adhere to what the Attorney General told us and I, we have not gotten to whether we're going to vote on this thing at all, because again, we need, we just went through this for the calendar. There needs to be a two third super majority for this not to be sent to committee and the two third super majority emergency preamble to vote on on the same night. And I don't know that that's gonna happen. So that's, anyway, again, if you want to, if you want to ask for really, I can be overruled, counselor. It's, it's fine. That's, it's, judges get overruled all the time, but that's where I'm coming from.
No, I, I appreciate that, Mr. President, but it's futile when there are eight sponsors on a matter to try and affect any change or have any conversation. That's sort of the point of my comment. I, I yield, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Counselor Connell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to reiterate a, a point that the Council President just made in the interest of helping.
Well, let's, we're just on the ruling right now, right? We don't have any motions. We're just on the ruling of sponsorship.
All right. The ruling of sponsorship, and, and I understand, I believe, what the Attorney General is saying. And, and that is, you don't want to present something which is a fait accompli that has been decided outside the view of the public. In this case, soliciting additional sponsors is happening in a public meeting, which is, I believe, quite different from, you know, Charlie or myself for, so one of the other sponsors calling, you know, a, a list of, of other counselors and getting to five and not going any further. So I think it's entirely appropriate at this time for us to, in the spirit of getting a little bit down the road on this and, and giving everyone a fair opportunity to express the sentiment that I believe a majority of us, well, clearly a majority of us, support by soliciting those co sponsors at this time. It never frankly crossed my mind that people would be offended by not having been consulted prior to this. I apologize.
Let's stick to my ruling.
That's another, my, my point is I think this is the right time to do it, and I agree with the Council President's ruling on it. I, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Lane.
Yeah, if I can just chime in, I mean, this is, it's, it's an important document. So, I mean, what I'd like to see, I'd like to see this go to committee and discussed as a whole. I mean, if we can all sit down and kind of discuss the document and the wording and wrap our heads around it, that's, that's what my intention is here. I'd love to see this be discussed further. I don't know if there's a deadline or, you know, if, if there's a hard and fast, you know, this has to be submitted by. But in, I mean, wouldn't that make sense for everybody to sit down and talk about it? So we get the wording right, so it, it unifies us rather than divides us?
Okay, well, I, again, I, we're on the ruling, but if someone wants to make a, a motion, we don't have a motion. We're still just discussing my ruling.
I'll make a motion to move to general government.
Okay, is there, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. On the motion to refer to general government, I'm going to go with the hands I have up. So Counselor Tontar, you were next.
And I get to speak even though I've spoken before.
Well, it's now on the motion to refer to general government.
Okay, actually, I had my hand up to, to respond to the Ward one counselors. So I'm, I'm gonna talk a little bit about that.
So I mean, my ruling on the
Yeah, on the ruling, if I may. It's just what I would challenge is the notion that because there are eight counselors who co sponsor a measure, that is a done deal. I've worked with all of you for some time and I, I certainly am open, and I think all of you are open to change your minds in, in light of convincing arguments and evidence presented by other counselors. So I can certainly see a circumstance where I might sponsor something and someone brings something up that I didn't see and I would turn around and vote against it. So I don't think it's a done deal, and I don't think that that argument carries any weight at all from my point of view.
Okay, well, that, that's enough on the ruling, but on the motion to refer.
On the motion to refer, you know, just, I, I think, you know, when I, when I put in the emergency motion, it looked like things were, were moving very fast in Washington. It looks like they have slowed down, and if it goes to committee and can come out first meeting in February, I think it would, I'm, I'm different with one of my fellow at large counselors, I think it would, would not be moot. I think it would still have an impact and would inform our representatives in Washington about how we here in, in Newburyport feel, all right? So I want to speak a little bit as to why I, I introduced this and why I solicited co sponsors and why I think the three co sponsors would join today. I think I'm as guilty as most. I was complacent. I, I didn't realize that democracy was as fragile as it apparently is. And, you know, it's been, you know, since, since the, we defeated fascism in World War Two and then communism, when the wall fell in the early nineties, I think we've been complacent. I think along with Francis Fukuyama, we, we have concluded that history is over and democracy, liberal democracy had won. And, and, and over the past five to 10 years, not only in the United States, but internationally, we have seen that democracy is, is being threatened, is under attack. Perhaps that's not surprising. You know, you know, the, the Greeks invented democracy and they viewed it as being an unstable form of government, like all other forms of government. And of course, the corrupted form of democracy, the term the Greeks used is a clockracy and rough translation of that would be ruled by the mob. And perhaps the Greeks were onto something. So the first point is democracy is fragile. The second point, and, and which also lies behind, behind this, this resolution is that, you know, recently I've, I've had the opportunity to travel to, to Chile. And as, as most people I think know, Chile fifty years ago had a coup. The government of Chile was, other than the United States, the longest running consistent democracy in the Western Hemisphere. They had had, other than the United States, they had had the longest peaceful transfer of power. And they lost it in the early seventies with a coup. And, and I can tell you firsthand experience, almost fifty years later, that is a fresh wound. And they do not, they, they just with massive demonstrations in twenty nineteen, the people of Chile have just demanded and won the right to write the constitution and to reconstruct the foundation for true democracy in that country fifty years later. And so now my second conclusion, democracy is fragile, right? The second conclusion is The second conclusion is that we cannot just pretend that this didn't happen. We should not just pretend it did not happen. We need to confront it, we need to investigate it, we need to find out how we got here. The third point I want to make, which speaks directly to the concern that this is not something that should be discussed on, on, on a local matter by, by a city council. I think it needs to be discussed by us. I think it, the, the, the the disintegration, the threat to democracy, the fragility of democracy has, uh, has permeated the entire country down to the local level. You see it in, uh, I mean, in, in, you know, there, there was someone out there who was willing, without any information, to assume that because city counselors didn't have their name listed, that they somehow supported the attack on the Capitol. All right, that kind of level of, of, uh, lack of, of civility, really, is, uh, is something we've seen more and more and more of. And, uh, you know, look, uh, I'm, I'm not trying to preach from some kind of moral high point here. I'm as guilty as most, I think, you know, one of my favorite political philosophers, Pogo, I believe he was an apostle, 1971 said, "We have met the enemy and they are us." So, uh, I'm not absolving myself and, and, uh, you know, maybe I, I should have been smarter. And, and I just didn't think that this would be controversial, quite frankly, in, in seeking co-sponsors. But, uh, you know, for all three of those reasons, all right? The fragility of democracy, the fact that, that we need to confront it if we are to move ahead and not get stuck. And, uh, and because it, it is pertinent on a local level. I urge you to vote yes to sending this committee. And I urge you to vote yes on this resolution when it becomes before the body. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Devlin is next.
Yes, I, I can, uh, stand in support of having this go into committee. I think, um, things do have a, uh, unify, committee deliberation does tend to have a unifying, um, uh, effect on, on things like this. I just wanted to explain why I didn't want to join as a co-sponsor, because, you know, I think most everybody agrees with 95% of what this says. Nobody's in support of the horrific events that happened on January 6th. Nobody's in support of the horrific, or nobody on the council, uh, is, is, is in the equally bad behavior of the former, uh, president, um, you know, you know, at least since the election, um, and, 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 and in contributing to the, to the, uh, the, uh, events on January 6th. There's just some language that I do, I, you know, can hesitate on, and, and so I, I didn't write it and that's why I don't want to co-sponsor it. I will say, it was very jarring. And, and one of those events where I just said, why do I do this? Why do I volunteer? It was very jarring to get that email and then it, it did, you, you couldn't help it. The, the email was very attacking from a person that, that a lot of you know and are friendly with and we see around City Hall and, and, uh, you know, it was also jarring then to see it in the paper and kind of get other people questioning and asking us and then wondering, I mean, this is a hyper intense climate right now and, and wondering as you walk down the street or having my wife wonder as we walk down the street, do I have to explain to everybody, you know, the, the rules of procedure? I, I actually find that happening a lot in a lot of what we talk about. People come in for pieces of our, our business here and, and they haven't, you know, been watching us or haven't been participating and, and they're immediately, they jump all over us as, as being those typical politicians when, when they don't know what our rules are and they don't know what we're, we're supposed to do. You know, I, I was worried about not voting for the, I, I don't particularly like emergency preambles. I've voted against them in the past and I was worried about how that would be interpreted if I, if I, if I, you know, you know, voted against the emergency preamble, which I've done before. And, and I really think this could, this could benefit, uh, you know, from the, from deliberation and, and, and become more of a new unifying document. And, uh, you know, I also think, um, you know, as, as the, the prior counselor stated that, um, you know, the, the events have seemed to dial back or slow down a little bit so that it could still have some impact, uh, so I am in support of sending this to, uh, to, uh, to committee and, and certainly look forward to that and in support of, you know, a vast majority of what that says. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Z is next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Section 2-32 of the City Code, the Committee on General Government shall be concerned with the supervision of city properties whose custody has not been assigned to a specific municipal department and the following municipal departments, city clerk, city solicitor, registrars of voters, information technology and human resources. The community shall have charge and supervision of city council chambers. The request to refer to general government plays into the concept that I'm trying to explain that there isn't a home for this on the city council. Go ahead and read the other committees and you'll find that there isn't a home in it for any one of those. I'll be opposing sending this to committee. And, um, I, you know, I'm just gonna leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Connell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess there are two points I would like to make. It, it clearly, um, the Counselor from Ward One has made a point that is, is worth noting. However, by, um, there, there are times when the rules cannot accommodate everything that comes before us. And by tradition, what has happened is that the council has referred those kinds of issues to the Committee on General Government. That's my first point. The second point is, and I, um, the Kirk Clerk can remind me who the sponsor of this, uh, referral was. I'm wondering if the sponsor would accept a friendly amendment to make this, uh, also a committee of the whole, because I think that there's enough interest from, um, from throughout the community and certainly from more than just a couple of members of this council.
Yeah, that, I made that motion, so I, I would accept that.
Then I would so move that, uh,
Just, just remember that takes a two-thirds super majority. Referring something only takes a bare majority.
I understand. Okay. And, and may I ask, who was the second? I don't.
I was the second.
Thank you. Thank you, so I've got Counselor Lane moving, Counselor Devlin.
I, I'm fine with that as well as the second.
Okay, so the motion on the table is changed, it is now uh, general government and committee of the whole. Counselor Tantar is next and then back to Counselor Z.
Uh, I support making it, uh, a, a committee of the whole. And also note in what, uh, Ward One Counselor just said, the Committee on General Government shall be concerned with supervision and the following departments, city clerk. All right, this resolution, uh, orders, if it passes, the city clerk to take an action. So therefore it is relevant to refer it to the Committee on General Government and the Committee of the Whole, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Khan, I don't think has spoken yet, Counselor Z, on the motion to refer, so I'm gonna recognize her.
Great, thank you, Council President. Um, I, I, I just want folks to know that this was a, probably for me personally, a learning experience and I'm, I, um, do want to apologize, I never thought of the perception, I, um, and so I am very, uh, I, I'm looking forward to sending to committee, to, to deliberating, talking about the language. It is important enough and, and, um, just, just wanted to share that perspective. So I do support sending to general government, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, back to Counselor Z.
Thank you, I just wanted to note that section 232 is not a rule. It's statute, it's law. So there's no provision to waive it or to change it, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, anyone else on the motion to refer to general government and committee of the whole? Roll call.
Roll call on the motion to move to general government and committee of the whole. Order, uh, 237. Counselor Z.
No.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Reagan?
Yes.
By a vote of 10, one, the matter moves to, uh, general government committee of the whole, if I might, Mr. President. That leaves an orphaned table.
Motion removed from the table and received and filed, Order 237 E P.
Perfect.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, just say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you for cleaning that up, that would have been a real pain. Yeah. I, I think we're on to ordinances now, yes?
Yes, we are, we're on to. Snow and Ice, second reading. Ordinance 66. Pertinent part, the penalty for violation of the section will be $50 fine to the property owner for initial and subsequent offenses. There are six hours after the snow, uh, falls to, um, do what one needs to do. There is, uh, now a new section B added. The owner, tenant, occupant or any person having the care of the building, a lot of the land on any street, where there's a sidewalk, shall cause that sidewalk to be made safe and convenient within six hours. And the penalty for the violation of said section will be $50 for the first and subsequent offenses. Druntly sponsored, Counselors Khan and Wallace on a second reading.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Any discussion on second reading? Roll call.
Counselor Z?
No.
Counselor Devlin?
No.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
No.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Reagan?
Yes.
By vote eight to three, second reading passes.
Okay, um, Ordinance 67.
Ordinance 67 is a new introduction, uh, it is, uh, an amendment to section 12-1. Pertinent part says that any business organization occupying the ground level space abutting a public way under the jurisdiction of the city may submit a written application to city clerk to obtain a license to place and maintain tables, chairs or other merchandise displays under the court control, including without limitation, portions of the public way. The, um, matter probably is too long to read into the record. It is, if I might, Mr. President, who is sponsoring Counselor, it deals with replacement of, um, what we have been dealing with for restaurants on the streets and placards now so-called. Anything else you'd like me to bring to their attention?
Yeah, the, uh, the committee, it's proposed that the committee did be empowered to review these for the council, on behalf of the council, is the licenses and permits committee. That's all, just so everyone knows. Is there a motion about what to do with this thing?
Motion to refer to license and permits?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Vogel.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. With the, um, moving, um, Counselor, uh, be objective, I, I object to this being the Council of the Whole. Apparently.
Uh, no, but, uh, we're getting carried away with this Council of the Whole stuff, but no, I don't, I don't object, I don't know if the other, uh, my fellow members of license and permit, but I.
I'll, I'll wait to the floor. If, if, that's, that's an objection, I'm happy to wait to the floor.
Okay, uh, so we, we have, we're discussing the motion to refer license and permits, Counselor Z.
Just a quick question, is this a short-term change? I saw a date in there of, of a couple of dates, actually, or is this a permanent change?
No, it's permanent.
It's a permanent change, thank you, I'm all set then.
Further discussion on referral. Uh, all those in favor of referring to license and permit, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Was that in committee of the whole or not, just I, I wrote it down?
It's just license and permit.
Okay, thank you.
Now we have a late file zoning amendment, right?
We do, we do.
I think that's Counselor Shan's.
Is.
Counselor Shan, you might do a better job than I. I'm sure you would for that matter.
Well, this was actually had to put in as a request from some work that was done by the planning board and, uh, the planning department, it's, uh, basically straightening up some, clarifying some language that's in our current zoning that's, uh, unique to Newburyport, so I agreed to sponsor it.
Motion to refer to planning and development?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor referring to planning and development, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, I think that's all the ordinances, right?
That's correct.
All right, now we're on to committee items. Economic development, there's nothing currently. Uh, I think that when the weather gets warmer, it'll probably heat up again. Ad hoc committee on central waterfront. We, we actually did, all, the, the five of us turn in our ratings for the bidders. So that's now in the hands of Planning Director Port and he is tallying the scores. And then, uh, the idea is to narrow it down to three or four, remember we had 14 bidders. Narrow it down to three or four. And then the mayor and I and Andy would do the interviews. We thought it would be unwieldy to have more people, but, you know, we can, other people want to be involved, we can figure that out. And then, um, the final step after the interviews is you open the envelopes with the dollar bids. So that's done last. All of this, by the way, is confidential by law. After the bidding process is over, all of the documents become public. But until that time, we can't discuss what we're working on. Budget and finance, Chair Z.
Um, nothing tonight, just a quick reminder that, uh, we have, we are meeting tomorrow night on several matters, starting at 6:30, those are posted. And then at 7:15, we have budget, planning and committee of the whole related to Low Street. You should have received a Zoom link for both, if you didn't, just let me know, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Education, Chair Khan.
Yes, thank you, Council President. We have a education committee meeting on Monday, February 1st at 5:30 to 6:30 before the school committee meeting. Um, the, the main thing for those, if you're wondering if you should tune in, we are getting some updates on some of the building needs that were requested from some of the committee members. Uh, the high school roof update, the administration office space and needs and the high school chiller. And then we'll also hear from the superintendent on any updates related to the vaccine, the, um, the reopening. So if anyone is interested in joining us, I encourage you to do so. The Zoom link and everything is posted on the public, um, calendar, thank you.
Thank you. General government, uh, I think the best use of time would be to figure out a date for our meeting on the, uh, resolution that we just referred for the January 6 events at the Capitol. I chair general government and it's going to be committee of the whole, so it really is not unlike a special meeting of the city council, so, what, what do people want to do? You know, it's already Wednesday, we're off. So this week is out, it's not gonna work. Monday, the first, what does Monday, the first look like?
I can't.
Sorry.
Go, go ahead, Counselor Khan.
Yes, there's a 5:30 education committee meeting and then if people were gonna be paying attention to the school committee meeting at 6:30, it might be a little tight unless, um, people want 7:30.
Fair enough, how about Tuesday, the second?
Public Utilities has a meeting on, uh, the fee increases.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, but that's all, how long is that gonna last?
Oh, I, 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 I can't tell you, I have no idea.
See, you put it there for two hours, we've got one order and it's gonna be two hours?
Well, no, no, I, I always do that, just so I won't, I don't, won't get cut off. I'm hoping.
Well, well, how about this, so, I'm sorry, uh, that's at six?
6:30.
6:30.
Do we do it earlier?
Could, could, could I, could we, maybe if you moved it to six, if that's okay with your committee, uh, Chair Tantar, I might not want to enforce you, it doesn't. And then we could just.
I, you know, I can do it, I would also, also having the Director of D P S, the superintendent and the business manager attend the meeting.
Well, how about, how about this, how about, how about I, I'm gonna, and I'm going to try to schedule general government committee of the whole on this resolution for 7:30, okay? That's why I'm gonna try to, I'll try to do that. And, um, you know, if you need more room for your thing, you could, and you can move to six, I leave that to you. But, um, I will do 7:30 on the second. Counselor Devlin.
Second.
Is there, is there, is there a timing problem with doing it the third? Cause I, I do have something on. I, is there, is there, is there a timing problem with doing it the third? Because I, I do have something on at seven-thirty on Tuesday.
Well, we have a code revision, uh.
Yeah.
We have a code revision meeting at six-thirty.
Fine, do, I, I, that's fine, I can, I'll rearrange.
Oh, you are on, you are on general government.
Yeah, I know. No, no, I'm not on general government anymore.
Yes, you are.
Mm-hmm. Okay, yes, I am.
I, but, so, I'm sorry, are you going to be able to make it seven?
Yeah, I have some flex, like, I'll rearrange what I'm doing.
Okay, all right, because I, because I think it'll be important, because there's that five percent language. I mean, that's key, but, okay. All right, all right, enough on that.
Uh, what day did you decide?
Tuesday, the second.
Second, February second.
Tuesday, February second at seven-thirty PM, and I'll work with the clerk and get notice out. Okay, um, licenses and permits. That's, that's you, Chair Devon.
Yeah, thank you. Motion to approve collectively uh communication two-thirty, application fourteen, and application fifteen.
Second. Did you mean approve or receive and file?
We. Oh, that's a good point. I can't do it. That's a good, thank you very much. Uh, motion to, it's been a while since I've done this. Motion to uh collectively receive and file.
Oh, that's, that's, that's better. Yeah, do you have a second on that?
Second. Second.
Discussion, Counselor Devon.
Yes, these are cleanups from uh the, the beginning of uh the pandemic, and then uh the two applications that came in prior in a letter regarding an application that came in prior and got superseded by uh, you know, a later application process that we put in place for the parklet. So uh, it was uh, three to nothing out of licensing and permits to receive and file these.
Okay, anyone else? Uh, all those in favor receiving and filing, say aye.
Just a point of order, which, which numbers, I'm sorry, I got.
It's the first, first three on the agenda, so communicate.
Oh, yeah, communication two-thirty, application fourteen, application fifteen. Thank you very much. Well.
For a note we're voting on. Okay, uh, on the motion, receive and file, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, keep going, Chair.
All right, give me one second to, okay, uh, motion to approve um, communi, I'm sorry, application, this is going to be a little out of order, application uh oh-one-nine um one-eleven two thousand twenty-one Plum Island uh Auto Works, or Plum Auto Works, Inc.
Second.
Uh.
Go ahead.
These are a, the, the, the four that we're going over are the uh class-two auto dealer licenses uh that this one has been um approved continuously. We have to approve them every year. For those of you in the licensing and permits who are no longer there, I'm sure you missed this. But it's uh, this one's been in continuous use since two thousand and seven to the present. And uh, it, it was recommended to approve uh three to nothing.
Thank you. Other counselors. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Next.
Motion to approve communication zero-two-zero from the same date, one-eleven two thousand twenty-one, R.L. Curry.
Second.
Yeah. Discussion, go ahead.
Same thing. This one's been continuously approved since two thousand and five to present, and it was uh recommended uh three-nothing out of the committee.
Any, anyone else? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
All right, motion to approve oh-one-seven, application oh-one-seven from twelve uh fourteen, two thousand and twenty, State Automotive.
Second.
Go ahead.
Uh, this one has been in continuous approval since two thousand and sixteen, uh, so not as long. Uh, there was a question from uh, the, the Counselor Tontar about the um uh, the surety bond. Uh, for those of you who are not familiar with this law, uh, they require a twenty-five-thousand-dollar surety bond. The way the bonds are written, they, they, towards the bottom of the bond, you can see where it says that they are continuous um, unless the um, the uh surety gives uh thirty days written notice of cancellation to the municipal licensing agency, and then it lists our uh city hall address. Um, so it's a little strange, you know, some, the, the first two we went over, those companies give continuation certificates for the surety bond. Uh, this company, CNA, and uh Western Surety doesn't, so that when you look back on it, like, for instance, this one, it's dated two thousand and sixteen. In this one, uh, we, we, we condition it upon uh receiving evidence that the surety bond is still in existence. We missed, though, um, that there was a binder, and if you look at the binder where it, 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 it lists the insurance uh for the surety bond, it says the surety bond is uh continuous till two two, I think, two-twenty-one-twenty-one or two-two-twenty-one. Um, I'm just looking at my notes right now. Yeah, so it's still in effect right now. As, in essence, the, the, the uh statute says that um, you know, that we, the municipal authority, won't issue or renew the license and let, unless we are satisfied that the surety bond is in existence. So we, we do have the discretion. Uh, it was approved uh three to nothing.
Okay. Other counselors have questions or comments on this one? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You have one left, Counselor?
Yes, motion to remove zero-one-eight from the same date, twelve-fourteen two thousand and twenty, and that's uh LCA Motors.
Second.
Go ahead.
All right, so this one is somewhat trickier, but this uh committee members was the one that I couldn't remember, and I'm sure other members of the former members of the uh licensing permit uh committee now will remember this one, now that I've seen the paperwork. Uh, this company really goes out of its way not to give these continuation certificates. So what they had presented in the past, and what we, I, we used to approve in the past was something that was circulated by the clerk today. Uh, and it's a letter um that had asked the registry motor vehicles to rule on whether you needed to give a continuation certificate, because the letter from this surety bond company explained that they don't give those out. Um, and the registry of motor vehicles said that um, you know, yeah, and, and again, this was dated uh two thousand and four, I believe, but uh, that, that the municipalities, um, let me get the exact language here, sorry. That the municipalities don't, um, yeah, it, it should not require the, I'm not giving you the exact language, I don't have it on my fingertips here. But the municipality uh shouldn't require this, there it is. Based upon the wording contained in the bond as stated in paragraph number four, which is the wording we have in our bond, the registrar is satisfied that the above identified Western Surety Secondhand Motor Vehicle Dealer Bond continues on the law unless the municipality is notified of cancellation. As such, a municipality in Massachusetts that is processing a renewal for a class-two dealer license from a dealer who has a Western Surety Secondhand Motor Vehicle Dealer Bond on file with the municipality should not require additional evidence that the bond is still valid. We didn't have this in front of us. We conditioned this upon the clerk receiving satisfactory evidence. There's two issues here. One, this one has been in continuous use and, and been uh renewed since two thousand and five, so fifteen years. They're a good business citizen. Um, we do have the discretion, I, I think, in the statute to allow it um, as long as we're satisfied. Um, we could also just condition it upon them providing, you know, the binder like the other company, the other uh dealer did, but you know, I'm, I'm at the point where I think we're making them jump through a lot of hoops for something that we've approved in the past, so I'll leave it up to the, the will of the council, but uh it did come out three to nothing conditioned upon um them providing satisfactory evidence to the clerk, and in response, they sent us uh the registry motor vehicle uh in from letter.
Thank you, Chair. Other, other counselors, questions or comments? All those in, oh, Counselor Tontar, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to know, you know, this is, uh, I, I'm new to license and permit, so I raised uh some of these questions, and what I saw was uh you know, simply an inconsistency between um it's a Western Surety Company and the other sure, you know, insurance companies that provide um continuations. Western apparently does not. Uh, I think, you know, I, uh, again, I don't have a lot of experience with this, but I, I've seen enough. And I want to thank um the city clerk for going out of his way uh with repeated communications uh to the owners of, of these companies to uh, that, that I'm satisfied. I think the surety bond is, and that, that's really what goes on here, because these companies, if uh someone were to buy a car and, and something went south, you want the bond to be there to make them whole. Uh, and that's our responsibility in the city council to assure that that's the case. And uh, why Western Surety doesn't issue continuations? I have no idea, but I'm, I'm pretty much satisfied that that bond, those bonds are there.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, it's not the most civil discourse, but I have to say, if you're ever dealing with insurance or surety, uh, just keep your hand on your pistol at all times. Any other comments on uh this matter? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, was that it, Chair Devon? Good.
Oh, yes, that is. Uh, one, one last thing, though, we, we did um uh set a date for the short-term rental. There, there is some confusion, the, the planning, development, and uh committee, and uh planning and development joint committee have um reviewed the zoning ordinance, but there's a whole another license apparatus um uh set up as structure, which we do have to review. Uh, we were looking at February tenth. Um, we didn't get as specific as a time, but it's probably six o'clock. Um, just shoot me an email if you want to attend, and that, that's a problematic time for you. I did, one of the sponsors is on the licensing and permits, uh, luckily, and then I did speak to the other permit, uh, the other sponsor today, and, and he's available on that date as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, Chair. Uh, public safety, Chair McCauley? No, I should, this is. Development, uh, planning development, Chair Shan.
Nothing tonight, Council President.
Okay, thank you. Now, McCauley, Chair McCauley.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Uh, I would like to make a uh motion to approve um uh order uh two-thirty-one.
Second.
Um, so in, in this particular uh ordinance uh uh order, excuse me, was sponsored by uh uh Counselor uh Connell and Counselor Shan. Uh, it is to amend um, uh, really in um uh, the bottom section of this, the def, uh, the definition of downtown business as a registered business located in the area bonded by High Street, Federal Street, the Merrimack River, and was formerly Winter Street. The proposal was Kent Street, and after deliberation in public safety and uh significant comment, it was amended to Boardman Street. And so what you have before us is a um, an ordinance amended in committee uh that really just changed, uh, that added registered business and uh, moved it to Boardman. Um, I'd, uh, I'd offer up if either of the sponsors would like to uh also comment as to uh any background or anything like that that they would like to share.
Counselor Connell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and through you to the members. Um, I can tell you, the, the origin of this uh particular proposal uh was a call I got from um a professional office, Dental Partners of Newburyport on High Street. And Doctors Bellevoe and St. Clair uh have about a dozen employees on that particular location. And uh, they were hoping that they could uh purchase for their employees, for some of their employees, I'm not sure how many, um, a parking permit, so that because they travel from outside the city to their workplace, they would have the opportunity to park their car in our parking garage if they were considered uh within the business district. And as you may recall, we set the border at Winter Street previously. It seemed reasonable to me um for a number of reasons to move the border over so that it would capture this business, and, and here, here's my argument. Uh, one, um, there are potentially a half dozen to a dozen vehicles that have to be parked somewhere for these employees to get to their workplace. Uh, on the streets is where they park now. They were parking occasionally in Cushing Park, but as you know, that's the lay-down area for materials uh related to the Safe Roots to Schools project. There've been a lot of construction vehicles there, even though there was some space for them to park. Um, they apparently didn't feel um particularly safe with heavy vehicles dumping piles of gravel around their cars. Uh, so they've avoided it, instead parking almost exclusively on the streets. So this proposal would get some of those cars potentially off the streets um in, in, in that neighborhood. Um, it would also ease some of the pressure on Cushing Park. As we know, during snow emergencies, Cushing Park is the preferred parking space for a number of residents in that neighborhood who don't have um parking off the streets on their private property, so they use Cushing Park instead. Third, it um, it increases, quite frankly, some revenue in the parking garage, and having consulted with the parking clerk, it seems that uh, that the, the uh, the garage is not oversubscribed, and so in fact, it would increase utilization and bring some revenue to the city. And, and, and finally, and I know that you all are fans of dentistry, you look forward to going to the dentist once or twice a year. Um, this would help a local business, uh, retain its workers, providing a reasonable benefit, and uh remain a successful uh practice in its current location. And so I would urge uh you to, to join us in supporting this, and I look forward to answering any of your questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vogel is next.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. President. I just wanted to add a little bit of um, answer the um the, the, the question that you probably have as to why we went from Kent back to Boardman, Boardman. Um, if you go all the way to Kent, you go all the way down to the river. Um, you actually grab a whole lot of businesses. And uh, through our discussion, um, we thought it was be prudent to just make the turn at Boardman um and grab this business, and certainly, you know, in the future, if those businesses that are on the other side need similar circumstances, we could consider it, but um, I, I, I picked that up, and I thought that maybe we should just back up a bit. So that's why we're at Boardman and not all the way out to Kent. Uh, just to, just to avoid all of those businesses that we would then grab.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Z is next.
Um, I, I just have a quick follow-up to uh the at-large counselor, if I may. So now, now I understand, I, it was exactly my question, how did the discussion come about to move, move it back, but what is the detriment to picking up more businesses? Why don't you want to pick up more businesses? Now that I understand why that decision was made in committee, what's the argument for not catching more businesses? If I may.
Shall I respond?
Please.
Well, you know what? Um, I hope I get a little bit of help on this exactly. Um, there were some questions um as we went down the streets. Um, as to what, it, it looked like we were opening sort of a Pandora's box, if you will, as to um what businesses would be appropriate and what businesses wouldn't be. Um, I, I think that's where, which way it went, and then in my eye, at the bottom of Kent, you did touch on Leary's, um, you did touch on um everything, you got the park lunch, you got the gas station there, then the park lunch, and then the Mardi Gras. You know, on and on, and I think we just thought, you know, we're, we're opening a can of worms. That's, that's, help me out, whoever else was there.
May I just follow on that?
Well, well, hold on, uh, Counselor McCauley or Chair McCauley, were you going to respond on that one?
Uh, I was. I was going to add a little uh breadth of color there is that uh we were, uh, we were trying to balance the capacity with the uh uh, with the parking garage. Uh, we didn't want to fill it up, uh, completely fill it up, or potentially fill it up with um, you know, businesses when we have a uh, a transient tourist type of community that we'd also like to park in there as well. Um, so we felt that uh, at this point, Boardman was a, a good um, a good stopping point, and that the other businesses had uh on-street parking, uh, had parking lots of their own, uh, et cetera, and that just moving it would not necessarily be impactful for those businesses. Um, it is another block or so for a walk. Uh, it is another, uh, and they do have other type of parking um arrangements uh on uh the further you get out or uh from the center of town. So that was real, that was to add a little color to uh Counselor Vogel's comment.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Shan was waiting, um, and then.
I'll, I'll just jump back in the queue, thank you.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll defer to Counselor Z.
Bo-si-do. Councillor, okay, he doesn't want to go. Sorry, you're on councillor Shan.
All right, I just want to say Boardman is fine. I think as long as we have the opportunity to have these folks parking in the parking garage and not Cushing Park because goodness knows Cushing Park is overloaded even on a, a good snow day. So I think having Boardman Street, that works. So thank you for the change and look forward to seeing this one go through.
Thank you. Now councillor Zee.
Thank you. Now that I understand sort of the background, I just wanted to respond. So I, I would, I will support it with Boardman. But I guess I just want to state that I don't really agree with the logic of, of cutting out more businesses. I think anecdotally, many of us drive by the garage and know that in a lot of ways, the first floor has been used for significant car storage, which was never the intent of the garage. In fact, the garage, my understanding was related, you know, in part to the waterfront and then in part towards sort of economic development. So I guess I don't, I don't understand the, the sort of what balance what? The garage is not full on a regular basis, other than in snowstorms. And you know, if businesses want to use it, even if they're a little bit further out of downtown, it seems odd to me, I guess, to, to push them out. If you, if you want to encourage the use of the garage for business use for economic development, then it seems to me that catching, capturing more businesses is not a bad thing. And if they're a little bit too far for the change to be impactful, then it sort of works itself out. You know, if, if businesses, if it's just too far, then they're not interested in it, then they don't buy a pass. And that's, that's okay too. So I, I don't have any particular objection with Boardman. Maybe we start with Boardman, see how it goes and then, and then move out to Kent. But just all I'm trying to say is, there's nothing wrong with catching more businesses. I think that in general, the more businesses use the garage, the better. If that allows them to grow their business and to develop their sort of, you know, allow maybe more room for their customers and their lot, that there's nothing bad about that. It is a garage in a downtown. It was never intended to be a, you know, residential garage for, for residents right around there. That's all. So I will support it just with those thoughts.
Thank you councillor. I'm sorry councillor Connell, councillor Lane hasn't spoken yet, so I need to call him in.
Thank you. I, I actually agree with what the Ward one councillor saying. I'd like to make a motion to amend to back to the original to Kent Street. I think that, you know, cutting out businesses like, I mean, let's be real, we do need more people to use the garage. So why not offer it to more people and increase that amount? I don't think it makes sense where it is, but I, I would make a motion to amend to back to Kent Street.
Is there a second? I'm not hearing a second councillor. So we'll go back to the, the underlying motion councillor Connell was waiting.
Thank you, Mr. President. I might, I'm going to kind of argue this backwards. I, I think that councillor Zee raised some, some important questions and I want to answer those. But I'd like to answer the, the boundary question first. My original intention with Kent Street was that it's, it's a pretty straight shot right down Kent Street to the water's edge. It's easy to draw, it's easy to know where it is and where it's not. If you get on Boardman Street, you have to do a little bit of jujitsu as you go over Merrimack Street before you get to the water's edge. And I thought that it was easier the other, in the other case. But I, I have no objection to it being Boardman Street. It meets the original objective, objective of the proposal. To councillor Zee's point about how this is going to operate, which I think that's what he's asking, and I think it's a good question. As the, the, the doctors explained it to me, they're particularly concerned during the winter months. Not having to try to park on the street gets in the way of the plows, it's tougher on the neighborhoods, et cetera. And I suspect, although I don't know this to be the way it's going to operate, but I suspect and what they think it's going to do is give people a, a place where they can park their cars in the winter, walk a few blocks up to High Street, work for the day and then get out of town from a secure parking garage at the end of the day. They also made reference to the security issues regarding some of their female employees. And I'm not sure I, I really understood that, but they felt that their employees would be more secure putting their cars in a garage there that is under some supervision rather than parking on the street. And I'm not sure I really understood it, but that was one of the arguments they made. So it was, I think what's going to happen is that they're going to offer this to her for a handful of their employees. And give them the opportunity, particularly during the winter months, when it seems from their perspective to be most troublesome. I might also point out however, other companies, other businesses, registered businesses that may be involved Humphreys Insurance, Bentley's Real Estate. I think, I don't think they're going to be using it because they obviously need their cars right there and they're hopping in and out to go show properties. They've got their parking worked out apparently. And the Hungry Donut, or is it the Angry Donut, excuse me, is the other business that I picked up just walking around. Other than that, I don't think anybody else is going to be affected or potentially use this, this this opportunity to park in the parking garage if it's Boardman Street. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillors on the motion to approve? Roll call.
Roll call on the order number two thirty-one that now has continued to have Boardman Street. Motion to approve councillor McCauley and councillor Tontar. Councillor Zee?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
And Councillor Agnew?
Yes.
Order passes.
Chair McCauley, did you have anything else tonight?
I do not councillor President, thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair Connell, I skipped you, Neighborhood and City Service, did you have any announcements tonight?
I figured you'd pick that up eventually. No, nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm pretty tired tonight. Public Utilities Chair Tontar, did you have anything tonight?
Just an announcement to repeat, Public Utilities will be meeting Groundhog Day, February 2nd at six thirty to discuss the fee increases, the water, from the Water and Sewer Commissioners. Those fee increases predominantly would fall on contractors. Again, we will have the, the director of DPS there, we'll have the water management administrator there and we'll have the business management there to answer questions. As we, this is the, many of these fees have not been changed since two thousand and six and a few of them were changed in two thousand and thirteen. And we'll discuss the implications of it.
And these, these aren't, Chair, these aren't the rates for water and sewer generally, these are special.
Okay.
For instance, if you, if one is building a new development and needs to break into the water main and the sewer line, they have, they, they pay for that and these are the rates that would be charged.
Thank you. Chair Vogel, rules.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Okay. Go to the order, so. Yeah, well councillor Khan, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to let folks know the ordinance review committee is meeting next week on February 3rd, six thirty to eight thirty. And we're now going chapter by chapter, so we have three chapters in mind for that evening. And traffic, stormwater management, environment. So folks want to listen in or have things that they want to send over to me an email on any of the ordinance in terms of anything that you want to raise as a concern, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Vogel.
Go ahead, Mr. President, you, you wanted to go first, I'll wait.
Well, I was going to talk about the AG opinion. So if.
You go first.
Okay, so first, could I have a motion to waive the rule so I can send an email to everyone?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so what I'm emailing to you is, is the, the very brief, one paragraph that Rich Jones got back from the AG assistant that was on duty. And you don't, you don't have to digest it all now, but what I added to it is there was actually, I don't think she cited it, but the city of Cambridge, they had a ruling on this years ago. And just to tell you what I had said before, really, it's a very curious ruling. Their ruling is that you can't, if you're councillor, you can't contact any other councillor, not just a quorum. Anyone. And that they have this sort of what I call a parlor game that they want us to play where the clerk would send us an email with a proposed resolution with no one's name on it, I guess, and ask all eleven of us, who would like to sponsor? And he has to, he has to do it by BCC, it has to be blind so that we don't know who's responding. And then when it shows up on the agenda at this council meeting, people can say, I would like to be added as a sponsor. I, I, I mean, I'm going to editorialize, I think it's a bit crazy. You know, one, one thing that occurs to me is by that logic, you know, we really wouldn't be able to have a conversation with each other about anything, you know, because let's take tonight's debate, it was about a resolution. And, you know, councillor Zee was saying, well, why do we even have jurisdiction over it? I mean, does that mean we can't talk about federal politics ever? You know, that's kind of weird. And then, you know, it get, we had also non-binding resolutions on all kinds of things, like, you know, Arbor Day or whatever. So I'm not saying that the AG's opinion makes a heck of a lot of sense. I'm just, I'm just the messenger. And, you know, the safe course, of course, if you don't want to, you know, run a scans of, a run afoul of the AG is to go through this new parlor game. I, I think really as a practical matter, I know what I'm going to do is I'm just going to submit things by myself. It's just not worth all this. But we don't need to decide this tonight, I just wanted you to have the information. And then we have rules on sponsorship that we worked out three years ago. I don't remember the number, but you can find them, yeah, it's like rule, rule eleven, rule twelve. We're going to have to amend them if we, if we don't want to have this come up again. That's it, that's all I wanted to say. Councillor Vogel.
Well, as far as the good of the orders, that where we're at, right?
Well, I mean, do you have anything else on, on the sponsorship? Again, I, I'm just giving you the information, you have the email. Any councillor, you can't talk to each other, but you can sponsor a rule. Did councillor Tontar, do you want to speak on that or do you want to?
I just want to apologize, I had no idea I was going to open this can of worms. If I had, I would have just put it in without any co-sponsors. I apologize. We were going on just fine without knowing this.
Yeah, I, I, I never knew it. Councillor Vogel now, yeah councillor Khan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering if we could get a little sharper opinion on this from the AG's office. If it happened to be the attorney who is on duty right now and gave us an off the cuff opinion, it just doesn't make sense. I, I agree with you, it's, it's, it's a parlor game, it's silly. And what it would do is, is, is make it more difficult.
Yeah. But the problem, the problem is, I, I looked it up, it's an old opinion that she was relying on from Cambridge. So, but anyway, I.
Okay.
I thank you for verifying that it's crazy. Councillor Zee.
I'm sorry, I, I guess I, I'm trying to read the email quickly, but can you just explain to me again what you, what your understanding is or, or city clerk Jones, if you want to explain to me, what is your understanding? What is your takeaway from this? That anything that comes in with say two sponsors is not appropriate or was done inappropriately? Is that what the conclusion is?
Well, I think Rich Jones, you take a turn, you try.
Well, I mean, that's a good point. If you want to read it strictly, you could really never talk to anybody else. Although I, I do want to say parenthetically that we have over the years had many resolutions often sponsored. Ultimately signed by everyone, I won't say sponsored by more than two. But often in the course of discourse, people say, clerk, can you have everyone sign this? And everyone says, yes, I'd like to sign this and we go ahead and do that. I think that's perfectly okay because it's done on the floor. The other wrinkle to it is, if I remember correctly, what she said today was that if I, if you had a resolution, let's say to sponsor something about the valedictorian and you said, you know, I really would like everyone to sign it. And it's non-controversial, you could send it to me. I could blind carbon copy everyone and say, I'm going to put your name down on this, is that okay? And you know what's going to happen, everyone's going to say, sure. The trick and, and the, the pitfall, potential pitfall is when what councillor Tontar did unknowingly contacts one, two, three and four, they're interpreting that as a serial communication, which if you think about it is a deliberation outside of a public forum. So it does make sense. It's just that the bottom line is you, you end up not being able to talk to anybody about anything if you're going to sponsor something. That's what councillor argument is bothered by and so am I. It's almost an unworkable rule for a small democracy. Because let's be honest, you need to talk to get stuff done. So that's my take on it, I don't know if I answered your question.
But yeah, but to give you the example councillor Zee, here's how I read it. I, I don't think it's ambiguous with what she wrote, I think it's attorney Monahan is her name. And again, she didn't make it up and she's based on this weird city of Cambridge thing that I sent you. She's saying, so say, say, you know, councillor Tontar wants to introduce his resolution about January sixth. What, according to her, what he does is he sends it to clerk Jones. And then clerk Jones emails all of us blindly and says, who wants to sponsor this? And then it gets crazier. When he gets the results, he can't tell more than a quorum of who agreed. So we all, the rest of us have to wait until we see it on the agenda. I'm just, I know it sounds crazy, that's, that's what she wrote. So to me, the safe harbor, if we're going to honor what the AG says, and I, I'm not sure I want to, but the safe course is, why would you go through that? You would just, if you want to introduce something, just introduce it. Under our current rules, you don't need more than one person to introduce.
But, but if I, if I may, what I think I'm missing about is that this seems to be the issue when you want to have sponsorship that exceeds a quorum. That's, that's.
No, no, that's not, no, that's not what she said, that's not, no. Any more than one, any more than one, she said.
Wait, in, in the email?
Yes. You can't, in other words, what happened, we never, none of us knew this, at least I didn't know it. She's saying any deliberation, it's deliberation, period, for one councillor to go to another councillor and say, will you co-sponsor with me? That's their opinion.
Is, is that in the attachment?
Yes, yes it is.
I don't see it in the email.
Oh, it's second paragraph, read the second paragraph. Deliberation.
Including elected between or among a quorum. Of the public body is deliberation.
If I may, that seems inconsistent with the ethics training that we go through each year.
No, but it says, it says specifically.
Where are you reading quorum? No, no, no. No.
You can't contact a quorum.
No, no.
For purposes of open meeting law, a quorum is simple majority. I haven't read the attachment, I don't know what that says.
Well, the attachment is interesting because the complaint originated from somebody writing a resolution, getting four councillors together to write it, and then they emailed the other five councillors prior to the next city council meeting.
I agree, I, I, the attachment, I just read through while you were all discussing it. The attachment is talking about, you know, over a quorum communicating with the other four, the quorum communicating with the other four members. They, they gave it to a city, a non-council member, city of public official, public employee who then sent it serially, it's, it's just talking about the serial communication again.
I mean, as councillor Vogel said, you're not reading her second paragraph.
I, we, I agree with councillor Tontar, the second paragraph says, one, one person can't speak with a quorum because that makes six. Like, for instance with us.
That's not what it says.
It does. I'd read it again.
No, you're reading the first paragraph.
No, I, I was wrong.
When you, you know, the open meeting law prohibits deliberations between or among a quorum.
I'm sorry, I'm looking, I'm looking at the third paragraph then. In your case, read the paragraph beginning in your case, it would.
Yeah, but that's, 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 that, I, I would interpret that to mean if you go beyond the quorum.
Yeah.
But.
That is what it's.
Maybe it's just sloppiness on, on the author's part.
And it says, in your case, it would be permissible for the, for us to the clerk, send an email to all councillors, they'd like to sponsor a resolution. The councillor, so he's talking, that's talking about more than a quorum, what, what we do if we need someone more than a, if we want more than a quorum, which is what this case was about. Our, our immediate issue.
If I might, Mr. President, I would like to follow up with her and ask for clarification. The problem is, the way I look at it is when it says between our.
The, the problem is, uh, the way I look at it is when it says, between or among a quorum of the public body, does that mean among the six, does that include the five? Does that mean you can't, you can't, as Counselor Tantar did, talk to one, two, and then the third, and then the fourth? That's what I would like.
All right, all right, I, we don't, we're not gonna resolve tonight, and I'm outnumbered, but what I read in her email and the way I read the decision from Cambridge, two thousand thirteen, this whole system where you have the city, the city clerk uh, email people blindly, it doesn't say, okay, and if only five out of nine, uh, five out of eleven sponsor, they can talk to each other. That's not what it says. She, her, she seems to be assuming, as I think they are in the decision, that they never talk to each other, even though, even the less than quorum. But, but okay, maybe I'm wrong. All right, well, we, uh, we don't need to settle this now, I, I guess, Clerk Jones, why don't you? Yeah, she also, she never called me back on my other question too, which is about email.
Yeah, so I need to get back to her anyways to make sure she knows.
I'm sorry, Counselor Tantar has his hand up.
Uh, I could, moving on to a different matter, could I?
Oh, oh, I beg your pardon. All right, so are we done with this one? We're gonna have Clerk Jones.
One very quick uh, comment. I would be interested to know what the Ethics Commission rules on this sort of matter, because I think that what you're conveying tonight from the Attorney General is inconsistent with the training we receive through the Ethics Commission.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you. So, so Clerk Jones.
Absolutely, we'll look at both.
Get it, try to get a human explanation rather than a three paragraph email.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, yeah, now, now Counselor, uh, Tantar.
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you. I, I just wanted to thank School Committee Man, uh, Sean Riordan for raising the issue of the name of the NOC school, uh, which will go to the school committee for consideration. Uh, given, uh, what we have learned. In, in a letter to the editor from, from, um, Mr. Cullen uh, as to events that, that occurred in nineteen forty-one, so I'd, I'd like to thank him for raising that issue.
Thank you. Now, anything else on good of the order?
Yes, please.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I thank, thank you all, I know it's late, but I, I just have something that I would really like to just go down the road on very briefly. Would it be possible, Mr. President, can I share a screen?
Uh, i- if it's within, you know, reason, sure.
Yes, within reason. Um, how do I do this? Oh, there it is, okay. How do I do it? Just click on it, share it, okay? See what happens. Okay, thank you. So, I just, I'll, I'll be as brief as I possibly can. I- in the past, you, you, you've heard me speak of, of, of the concept of dialogue reaching consensus. And from my years of experience, um, and as a, as a, a union, um, uh, representative when I, when I worked for TWU A, um, I, I have found, I found this, this approach to be extremely oh, I don't know, it's less stressful, it's, 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 it's less overwhelming. And it certainly is more satisfying, and I came across this document, which is very similar to a document that I received when I was in training to be a, a union rep. And that was back in the seventies, just so you know. And so we're, we're in heatedness right now, where this body, we're talking about Low Street, just this whole tonight, the spectrum, it was really interesting, because at the beginning of the meeting, um, we were, we were in hot debate. At the end of the meeting, as we were talking about this, there was a lot of, there was a lot of consensus going on, and a lot of listening and a lot of talking. I shared this document with you, and I'm gonna ask the clerk to send it on, and I'm gonna ask you to read it. But the highlights I've highlighted right here, it, the difference between debate, discussion, and dialogue, these are so pertinent to what we're doing, and you can see, debate is, 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 is oppositional. And there's two sides, and if you scroll down here, let me see if I can do this. In a debate, winning is the goal, the debate inspired implies a conclusion. If you go back over here, dialogue is a collaborative, two or more sides work together toward a common understanding. And look at this word, uh, it's connectivity for community, this is, might is right. There, there's just great stuff in here, if we could at all, just take a moment, read this and take a breath. And in, look, look in the mirror and, and ask, ask this question, you know, what is driving you? What is, what is happening? Are, are, is winning the debate what's important? Or, or serving the community and, 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 and working towards a common understanding important? It's so frustrating to be going through this in the manner that we are going through it, I just hope that there's an opportunity to soften what we're doing, listen to everybody, reach out and, and, and try to put yourself in the other person's shoes and, and really strive so that we are working towards the community effort, not our own personal selves, all right, it, what's driving you?
I, I, I'm gonna stop you there, I think, I think now you're getting out of order, not, you know, serving, serving ourselves.
Thank you.
Serving ourselves rather than the community, I mean, that, that really is, that's not helpful.
Well, you know, I, I, I'm sorry that I got, I'm sorry that I went that, that far. That there's a difference between reaching consensus and simply debating, and that's all I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Okay, before I call on Counselor Devlin, I, I just want to remind you, what I'm charged with as the president is to enforce rules. The, the bed, the bedrock of our rules, the bedrock of our rules are Robert's Rules of Order, which are based on motion practice. Someone has to make a motion, someone has to second it. It is then debated, not discussed, debated, and then there's a winning side and a losing side. So I, I'm not, I'm not passing judgment on the, the utility of these other techniques, I'm just telling you, I have to follow what the rules are of government, and they are debate.
But I was, I was not suggesting that you don't follow the rules. I'm just pointing out that there are, you, you can, you can reach consensus in other ways. I understand it's labeled debate, I get that, but there's, I'm just pointing out that there is the opportunity there, there, there are, to listen, that there, and to, and to, and to ask questions and to attempt to reach consensus as opposed to simply winning the point, that's all, I'm not trying to argue.
But I, I, again, I, I, I have to object, because you're, you're saying essentially that by debating, you're not serving the, the community, and that's not, I don't agree with that, I don't think that's true, I think that would, that would be.
That, that, that wasn't what I was saying, I, that was not what I was saying, I, I'm sorry you misinterpreted it, and I'm sorry that it sounded like that. What I'm saying is, in terms of reaching a consensus, it's a, it, it, it is, it is a community effort. That's what I'm trying to say, we are a community, this body, and, and it, it, that, that, I'm just trying to take the heat off, and I'm suggesting that there are, there are some methodologies to take the heat off and to, to be softer and, and, and easier in, in the manner that we approach things, that's all I'm saying. And now we're gonna debate it, I'm sure. I didn't mean to, this was just the good of the order, but apparently it's the bad of the order.
Counselor Devlin.
I, I, I would just, you know, it, it was about five years ago to the day where I was a freshman, um, city counselor. And I rece-, we were debating the garage, and I was having some legitimate concerns about the height of the garage at five and a half stories. And I was using my, you know, I was asking a lot of questions, I was, I was resisting an immediate vote on it because I, I had a lot of questions that I wanted to ask, and I was getting intense amount of pressure um, to, to stop doing that and, and to, uh, to just allow the five and a, the bond design for a five and a half story built, uh, garage. And to this day, it's one of the best decisions I think I made, I still voted for the garage, but I think the garage is the appropriate size, I'm, I thank God to this day that it's not five and a half stories, and it didn't cost the amount that it would have cost to build a five and a half story garage. I received an email from a counselor who told me, I'm going to put this letter to the editor in the Daily News where it named me and called me stupid and obstinate, I think, I can't remember the other word, but it was an insulting word. And if I didn't just vote for the garage, I consulted other members of the council who had actually read worse drafts from this counselor that where I was really called out and, and, and called names. And I think calling me obtuse, which is another word for stupid, is name-calling. So although I agree with what you're saying here to some extent, I do, I think, I don't think we can get around debate. We are all guilty, sometimes, I have never, never behaved that way, ever, with another counselor. So I would ask that even the people who are saying things like this would think about their past behavior, I've never received an apology for that. I'm, I'm an adult, I can handle it, it's a little rough and tumble for me, but, but that was my introduction to the city council. And I didn't treat anybody that way who was a freshman counselor. I, I've, I've called people, I've tried to offer them some, some opinion and, and some, some experience and advice from my experience. But so, I agree with you, we could be more civil with each other, and, and, and I think when we are in committee, I, or, excuse me, in, in-person settings that, that we are, I think this, the Zoom, I've mentioned this before. I think the Zoom helps lend itself to kind of this interpersonal, but, but I, I'd actually really ask you, and this is for the good of the order, to think about your own behavior when, when you're suggesting that others are doing something that, you know, I've never treated anybody like that, ever, and I'm getting emotional about it, because I was so, I, I was a brand-new counselor. And, and that, that really, really, that and some other pressure that I was getting from people, and I actually think I will walk away from this and said, that was the best decision I've ever made, thank God, we don't have a five and a half story garage, we wouldn't be able to pay for it now. So I do not want to debate this anymore, I want to go, I haven't eaten dinner yet, I came straight from work, so you know, if you ever want to take it offline, I would love to talk about it, because that really, really hurt me. Thank you.
Counselor Zed.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll be brief. Um, first thing is, um, you know, I, I think that the community is best served by debate, actually. It, it is one idea against another, and you pick the best idea you can based on the arguments presented. So I just want to state that, and I, I, I can't sort of change my view on that, but more importantly and more practically, I wanted to, I wasn't gonna mention anything tonight, but, um, in terms of reducing or lowering the temperature, which I think is a good idea, I think that, um, you know, I have two, two thoughts I want to share. Number one is, I strongly and firmly believe it's time for the city council to figure out how to meet in person. I have tried every which way I can to make suggestions on technology. There are plenty of places in the city that will allow for social distancing, our school committee has been meeting in person since the fall. We had a debate about that, I understand and I respect that there are, uh, some discomfort for some counselors, and I think that should be accommodated. And the way to accommodate that is by having the right technology, so we can have good audio and video for those who wish to be remote while the rest of us can meet in person. I've made this known to the city council president, so it's not a shock to him, but I'm just telling you that, um, it's, it's hurt us, it's hurt us as a body not being able to meet in person, I'm sick of Zoom. And, uh, you know, I think I do it a lot for work, and so I do it all day, and then I do it all night, and I think many of you are probably in that same position. So that's one concrete suggestion that we need to consider and figure out how the heck to get there and sooner rather than later. And the second one is, I just want to remind folks that when we started this pandemic thing, the ad hoc remote, we had a policy in place that we weren't gonna do heavy-duty things during the pandemic via Zoom, and I think that's because sort of we inherently understood the limitations of Zoom and the stresses and the pressures that it puts on all of us. And we've drifted away from that, and understandably so, because the pandemic's been going on, and how long can you put things off? But when we started, we basically said, let's just keep the city running, right, and we didn't know how long it was gonna last, and, and now we know a little bit more about it. But the way I look at it, just listening to a meeting trying to be scheduled twenty minutes ago, there's meetings going on every night, Saturdays and Sundays included. It's killing us, I mean, I don't know how else to say it, and I think that, I, I think we, we should really come back together on that and think about if we're not gonna meet in person, or if that's not on the horizon, and frankly, even if it is, um, but it's only partial, that we need to revisit how much business we really want to take on. So now we're doing zoning, we're doing short-term rentals, we're doing fifty-seven Low Street, we're doing other, I mean, lots of important big stuff, and we're trying to be on Zoom for six hours a night, five days a week, plus the weekends, and I think that, you know, um, it, it's hard, and it's, it's probably too hard, and it's probably, I think, having a very negative impact on the bodies. So those are my two actual suggestions, you know, not sort of like, okay, I'm bummed out too, as many of us are. I think we need to think about meeting in person, I think we need to reduce the load on ourselves and think about how we can operate in a way that, you know, measures that frankly, like, you know, everybody can decide what's really important to them, but I, I do think that there are some things that if they don't get done for a few months, the city's not gonna fall apart on them. That's my two cents in terms of suggestions, and if there's interest, I'll call a meeting of the ad hoc on remote, and we can debate the merits of those things, or discuss them as the case might be, and see where the, where, where agreement is or isn't on those things, thank you.
On, on meetings, uh, yeah, we're, we're now in month, uh, what, ten? I, I, I don't even know. I don't know that we need to have any more meetings, I think at this point as president, I need to just do something. So I'm, I, I, I hear what you're saying. Anything else on good of the order?
Yeah, I don't want to debate it, I disagree, I just want that to be clear, I, the premise, I disagree that the medium is leading to problems for us. Um, so if you're gonna take any action, I think, I think that's, that's our point of departure. We're also potentially, eh, two months away, maybe, if the vaccines come through uh, to, to being in a position where we could begin meeting in person. Uh, I mean, there's tons of unknowns right now, this is not the best time to do it, I mean, if you uh, if you read epidemiologists, they say the next six to ten weeks could be the worst of it. Because of the new variations. More contagious, it, it could be better.
Anything else, good of the order? How about a motion to adjourn?
So I'll move.
Second.
Alls in favor? Thanks, everybody.